Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the July 13, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we'll stand for the pledge, and then I'm going to ask you all to remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I ask that you please remain standing for a moment of silence for a current Greenwich resident and a former Greenwich resident. Gino Ferrano passed away a few days ago. He was a Glendale resident, a lifelong resident here in town, a volunteer fireman in Glendale, also a professional firefighter in Ridgefield, and also ran a business with his wife, Logos, in Glendale. And also for Lowell P. Weicher, who was a former state rep, first selectman, congressman, U.S. senator, and governor, who still remained, had strong ties to this town and family living in it. So let's have a few moments of silence for them. Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 20, 2023?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of June 20, 2023?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. I'll go right into the updates. Want to thank emergency operations director Joe LaSella for the preparations and updates for the storm that we just saw the other day. We were very lucky. I know some people were not lucky and were flooded out, but they're, it could have been a lot worse, but, you know, we just missed the heart of that storm. But Joe kept us prepared, along with the, with JEMs and the police department, the fire department. We have a great team in place there, and I, you know, we're as prepared as we have ever been for any of these weather emergencies. So thanks to Joe. We had a very successful July 4 celebration. The video, I think, is up online.
I believe it's going up on YouTube.
Going up on YouTube. So if you weren't able to make the July 4 celebration here at Town Hall, it was very nice, and you'll be able to, to view it online. We had more ribbon cuttings, more businesses coming into town last Friday. We did Make Modern in Koskab, which is where the old Peels Hardware is. So if you have any time in Koskab, stop by there and wish them well. We also did a card store opening for memorabilia. I forgot the, the number on the avenue, on bottom of the avenue on the left-hand side. If you, it's right next to the Putnam Diner. If you look up on top there, if you have any sports memorabilia, it's a good place to go there, they'll grade your cards or your, any type of sports memorabilia, they'll grade it for you or send it out, and then you'll get the true value, and you could trade it in, sell it, whatever, buy stuff there, so.
How about Pokemon cards?
They do. They have, they do, yes. I didn't know that was a thing, but apparently it is. So I don't know if it's, and I think I'd go with the 57 Mickey Mantle, but that's me. And we had swearing in the other day at the police department. We had seven officers, four new, welcoming into our department, and three specials. So we're glad to keep the, those three veterans there with us. So that was a good day there. And tonight, we're start, this week, we're starting the St. Catherine's Fair. And a few of us, I guess, are going to be in a dunk tank at some point in the next few days. So if you, if you have, if you have it in for me or Heavy, you don't have to wait until November to get at me, but this will be your shot, your chance for the chief. So I don't know what, what times are, but we'll be there at some point. Bastille Day is this Friday at 9:00 tomorrow. I'll be raising the French flag outside. And Founder's Day is July 18. It is Greenwich's 383rd birthday, so we're looking forward to that. There'll be a ceremony at the First Congregational Church in Old Greenwich. Next Friday, a few of us will be guest chefs again at the Camp Simmons, where some of us went many years ago. It's always a fun time up at the camp up on Lake Avenue. We, on the same day, later on that day, I think at 1:00.
1:00.
1:00. We're going to have another ceremony for another championship team, this time the crew champions that just won overseas and won the championship there. So we'll be welcoming them on the 21st at 1:00 here. On the 22nd, we'll be getting more details out, but we're going to be doing a park cleanup, Rosa Hartman Park with Stanford. It's right on the border. The parking lot's in Stanford, most of the park is in Greenwich. So, and I walk it with my dogs all the time, and it's not that clean, and there's trails that need to be fixed up. So we've, I reached out to Mayor Simmons, and Stanford's all on board, lots of groups in Greenwich are on board. So we hope to have a successful date there. That's 9:30 on the 22nd. On the 24th, I'll be running to Stanford to wish Pam Williams a retirement, even though she works at UConn in Stanford, she's been a great friend to everybody at UConn. So we wish her well in retirement. Later that day, I believe, we're going to be celebrating Rick Strain of the Roundhill Fire Department, his 40th anniversary as chief. It'll be his 50th year as a volunteer, but that's later on in September. So we want to wish Rick well and thank him for his 40 years of service as the chief. And then lastly, the next meeting will be, for the first time since right before COVID, we're going to be meeting at night, I believe at 7:00?
Yes, 7:00.
It, it was a lot of fun. We did it a few times. We had pledged to do that in 2019, and then the pandemic hit, and I killed that. But we're, we're going to do it this time. We'll see how it works out. Maybe we'll go back to doing it, you know, once a month or switching it on and off. But we hope to get the word out there so people who want to come in, come to the meeting will know to tune in at 7:00 on the 27th and not 10:00 in the morning. So thank you. And Lauren, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everyone. So I'll stick to the laws of three. Last night, we had our third community forum for the Central Middle School Building Committee. And just before we opened it up to the entire community, we had an individual forum with the adjacent neighbors. That would have been our second one. So as we get closer and closer to the final schematic design that'll be presented to Planning and Zoning, it's just really good to get the community input. They'll also have an opportunity to provide input through the planning and zoning process as well. I was just saying to some of my colleagues previously that a lot of the issues are kind of longstanding and don't necessarily have anything to do with the school, such as speeding on Orchard Street and the various, you know, cut-throughs around Sandwich and Indian Rock. So those will all be discussed and brought to the forefront in the context of the Central Middle School rebuild. Reminder, we have Free Music Fridays, so assuming it does not rain tomorrow night, we have something planned from 5:00 to 7:00, Greenwich Commons, which is right next door to the Board of Education building. And a special thank you to Parking Services, I'm looking at Luanne, and DPW. We've been working on a brochure that allows or indicates for people that may not be as familiar with all the parking that we have around Greenwich Avenue, where the two-hour lots are, where handicap parking is, where we have free parking at Town Hall. And we're getting copies made just in time for the sidewalk sales. We have an intern that's working with us in the office of the First Selectmen that's going to give copies to every merchant and restaurant on Greenwich Avenue. We'll see what the uptake is. It'll also be available electronically on the website, and we'll just see how it goes, getting the information out and look to other sources. We had explored trying to put it in the Park mobile app, but that was not something that was possible, but maybe, you know, as time unfolds, it might be possible. Because as always, we're dealing with the parking on Greenwich Avenue, and I know we have some old business to consider as it relates to that.
Thanks. Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. My update will be brief. We are definitely here in summer. There's a chill feeling that's sort of overcome the town, literally in this room, it's rather cold. But nevertheless, it is also the beginning of our fiscal year, and budget season will soon enough be upon us. And so there's an item that I'd just like us to all think about. We all recently got a note of appreciation from a resident for the EV charging station at Town Hall, but also noting that it is constantly in use. And I take that as a sign of success. As we all know, in the next decade, we can expect half of all vehicles to be EV vehicles, and we know that Greenwich loves their new cars. So this is definitely something we should be thinking about. So I just wanted to note that I will be, as the liaison to the Energy Management Advisory Council Committee, I will take this back to them, and I know that we will be working with Public Works and Environmental Affairs to maybe locate some appropriate places for additional charging stations. And that's it from me. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, and remind me, I put in a call to the chairman, Peter Schweinfirth, and he did call me back, and I was on the phone in a meeting, and so I have to circle back with him. As you know, we're very supportive of the EV charging stations and the vehicles going forward, but I had some questions about, because of the fires that we're seeing now with them, that it's concerning, and I, the placement of them has to be really something that we, we focus on. And so I mentioned maybe even moving the ones we have up out of the, out of the garage.
Absolutely. Safety first.
Yeah. And the technology will catch up.
I think it's already there. I think it's just a matter of being thoughtful about where we place them in town.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the fires itself. They're, they're presenting a different challenge than reg, normal fires. They, the fire department's having to let them burn out, so it creates more of a concern. So I'm very confident that will be fixed in the, in the coming years. But until then, I think you're right. Well, that's what I wanted to talk to Peter about, so we can just make sure that we go forward and don't waste time with it, but make sure we do so in a safe fashion. So thank you. Appreciate your work on that. Now we're going to go on to old business, and Deputy Chief Gray and Luanne are here. They have the first three. Just woke up. You need to get some Red Bull.
Yes. Well, hello, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me back. I guess I'm just here to talk about the last three proposals. The three proposals that went forward was the, I'll do them in order. The loading zone on Elm Street, the handicap parking on Strickland Road, and of course, the, probably the big one, the change of 15-minute max to 30-minute max on Greenwich Avenue. In between the time in which you, in which we met before, it was advertised in four papers and, you know, all the locals, I understand even CBS News actually, you know, had a little blurb about it as well. So it was widely distributed, everybody knows about it, and we received one phone call regarding it, and it was neither, it wasn't really feedback, it was just informational. And so that's really where we're at.
Thank you, yes. And that's the purpose of these first reads. So I have not heard anything negative about these at all. And they did make sense the first time we heard them, but that's why we wanted to just let the public weigh in. But I have not heard anything negative, and I don't think.
I haven't either, but I think one of the landlords might have reached out, Fred.
One of them.
Alicia? No?
Kalishen?
Not about this.
Okay.
She may have, but I didn't say anything about this, but other things. But certainly we can, I'll make a note to call her just in case I didn't miss anything. Okay. So this, the first one, we'll take, we'll do one at a time, so.
Okay.
So this will be the request for the relocation of the East Elm loading zone.
Lauren Rabin, I move that we approve the request for the relocation of the East Elm Street loading zone.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay.
Lauren Rabin, I motion that we approve the request for the conversion of a handicap parking space on Strickland Road to be handicap van accessible.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you.
Finally, Lauren Rabin, I motion that we approve the request to update the list of 15-minute metered parking spaces and to add 30-minute metered parking spaces in Central Greenwich.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes. Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Luanne. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Going on to new business, and I will circle back, make sure I didn't miss anything with Alisa, Alicia. So under new business, the first up is a request for a temporary road closure of St. Rocks Avenue for the St. Rocks Feast, and is Frank Cortez here?
I think Sill is going to speak.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, Frank is online. Okay.
Okay. Just waiting for Frank Cortez.
Hey, Freddie.
Hey, Frank. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Good, how are you?
Good, good. Thanks for joining us. I know you're here for, to request the temporary road closure for the St. Rocks, St. Rock Avenue for the St. Rocks Feast, which we go through every year.
Yes.
It's, it's a small portion of the road there, but certainly, I don't, I'm, I know my colleagues, I'm pretty sure, are familiar with it. If anybody has any questions about it, it's something we do every year.
Well, this is, I don't have any questions. It is something that happens every year. Is this a first read, or are we voting on it today?
It's a first read, but, I mean, it's something that, you know, they, it's, Frank, just for clarification, it's the part between where the preschool is and across the street from HAMF School, just that little, that block there, correct?
That is correct, Fred, yes.
Yeah, it's a very small piece there, and it's done every year. I don't, you know, I don't, there's, no one ever has any issue with that, and it's, I mean.
It's been done many.
It's been done many times.
I don't mind taking it up now.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, it's only from 6:00 PM to about 10:30 PM. I, I think that's the time, the time constraints aren't, aren't massive.
Yeah.
I mean, generally, I like having second reads, but I've also said that when something is routine, I'm, I'm happy to vote on it. I mean, if we don't have any reason, if there's no time urgency, I'd rather have a second read, but I defer.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, too. I mean, it's, I'm certainly a yes sign-up, but if you, it's not, we can wait two weeks just in case we hear somebody who has a complaint, which I don't think is going to happen, because it's, as you said, it's only four, four and a half hours, and it's, it's done at night, and it's been done every year. But if we waited two weeks, Frank, would, would that throw you off or no?
No, as long as we have permission, like we always do. I don't see a problem with it, but.
Yeah. I mean. It's going to be a yes, because again, we, we know that this is done every single year, and it's very, very limited. So, all right. We'll, we'll vote on, you know, unless, you know, we'll vote, we'll wait till two weeks then, but again.
For your evening meeting.
For the evening meeting, but we'll make sure it's, it's done, just to give the.
All right. I appreciate that. Yeah, the feast does start on the 9th, so.
Yeah.
August 9th is the date.
It'll be done in two weeks. But thank you, Frank.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. So the, the second item there is not going to be needed. This was a, there were some questions about some of the additional insurance requirements. I think they've been answered. I want to thank Megan Damato for, for answering, and my risk manager. So I know that's, that's already been taken care of. And the church is always is a great partner for our town and is always willing to make sure that proper coverage and insurance requirements are met. So we thank the town for, for clarifying some of that.
I just, I just had a couple of questions, just because, just because it did appear on our agenda.
It appeared, and we left it on for a reason, but it was cleared up a long time ago.
Understood, but we've had, the three of us have had a number of emails asking about this. There's concern on the part of the Board of Ed that, that their conditions of the use of the field have been met. I just wondered if you could elaborate a little bit more, that you said Megan.
Yeah, Megan, Megan Damato has answered the questions and also let them know exactly when, if there's been some changes. So there's been more, there's been an increase in the ask for, for the coverage. And so that, there were some questions, obviously, that are going to come back, why so much more, why this, why that, what? And she was really diligent about, you know, responding. And so I spoke with Paul Capielli this morning, and he was, he was good with it.
Right. And similarly, the consumption of alcoholic beverages on, on the field.
Yeah, so here's my take on it. Look, I work there, I volunteer there, we do it all the time. It's a reasonable thing for someone to say, well, it's not on, on the school property. So I did go to the town attorney, I said, does that hold any weight? I mean, it was just a question, and the town would just rather err on the side of caution that, you know, they could take it over there and, you know, if there hasn't been any issues with that. But, you know, you always want to make sure you're, you're, you know, being safe and crossing your Ts and dotting your Is. So we're, we're fine with that. We're fine with that. We just want to make, everybody wants to make sure that every possible scenario is covered. And, you know, when there's something new, people are going to ask why, and then they get the answer, and they were fine. Go, is that it? Anymore? Going on to the third one, just some questions here, request for waiver of the permit requirement for the St. Rocks procession. I know Sill wants to talk to that, too, and it's a first read. My only concern was, originally, it was, it was put to us that it came from Parks, the Parks Department, but the Parks Department doesn't have anything to do with the roads, so that would be DPW, so.
I'll answer with.
Okay, thanks. So it was, it was kind of confusing why that came there. I know that, again, this procession's been done for 100 years, so, and they're very careful, there's usually police there, so I'll let Sill.
More road closure, right?
So it's, it's the request for the waiver of the permit requirement, but Sill, I'll let you speak to that, and anybody else that wants to.
All right. I'm here today to discuss the, the requirement of St. Rocks Parish, obtain a permit from Parks and Recreation for our annual procession. The parishioners of St. Rock have celebrated our patron, St. Rocco, for, with a procession every year since August of 1918. But only recently have we been required to obtain a, this, a permit from Parks and Rec. I would like to point out this in perspective for you. The St. Rock procession does not proceed through any park or recreational facility. The St. Rock procession does proceed along the sidewalks and streets of the town of Greenwich. And we have always been notified and will continue to notify the Department of Public Works. In an abundance of caution, as required, St. Rocks hires Greenwich Police to escort, escort the procession for its duration to ensure the safety of those who participate as well as the general public. St. Rocks has and will continue to seek and acquire all the appropriate insurance. I am curious to know what Parks and Recreation has to do with this.
Okay, thank you. That was my question, and I thank you, Joe, for showing up and to answer that, and then we'll go back to the, to the request.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joe.
Even though this does, the streets really are not within Parks and Recreation's purview, it's still handled as a special event, no different than a bike race that goes around town, a running race, a walk, et cetera. So we handle it as a special event. If Mr. McCora talks to DPW, DPW sends them to us because they, it's an event-based opportunity to use town property, which is the street, and it all comes through Parks and Recreation. There's a, they fill out the application, there's a routing slip that goes to JEMs and Police Department, there's, they pay the application fee, and they get the required insurance. So as of this morning, the application has been submitted, the fee has been paid, the insurance has been submitted. There's one little detail that's on the insurance that's not correct, which is that the date on the insurance for the event is the incorrect date. So we want to get the, the insurance updated. My department notified Father McIntosh over at the, at the St. Rocks Church that the, just the date on the insurance policy has to be changed, and the permit will be issued. So we're just looking for a correction on the appropriate date. This has been going on for many years, as far as the application for the procession. I can't, I personally cannot remember when we didn't have some kind of permit available, issued. It's a street event. I don't have anything to do with the Greenwich sidewalk sales, but we issue a permit for the sidewalk sales. Okay? The organization of that is that it, there's an application made, there's, there's information that's provided, and the routing slip of all the various departments that have to be, to get approval starts with that application. So it could be the Building Department, it could be the Police Department, it could be JEMs, it could be Fire, and the routing slip gets it to all of those organizations so that they can weigh in or sign off. And that's basically the reason why. It's more of an organizational thing versus territorial of what, who has control over the streets versus who doesn't.
Okay. No, thank you for the clarification, because that was, that was the only thing that jumped out at me, and, and I guess we're right, at the church, the committee's okay, you know, they're, we're fine with that. It was just, that was, I think, the only question. So thank you for clarifying that. So now we know going forward, whenever the road races, everything, they. Yep, exactly. So thank you, and I should have known that.
Yeah, maybe we need to, you know, do a better job of publicizing, because I don't know why this took up time on our Board of Selectmen agenda. It just was a, probably a question and an answer that could have happened separately.
I think this is issue publication, because we met with James Vidic, who's the procession chairperson.
I don't, I don't mean for this specific thing, but, you know, to do anything, it's a special permit process facilitated, facilitated by Parks and Rec. Just simple.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good. The good, the silver lining is it's, it's out there now, so when people know exactly, it's clarified. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Sill. Going on then to the fourth item on, under new business, is a request for a temporary closure of 203 Sheep Hill Road for tree removal, and I saw Joe Kay in the back from the Tree Division. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. How's everyone doing today? Ken, how you doing? Thank you for the help. So 203 Sheep Hill, there is a massive dead elm, it's like a 50-inch diameter tree, it goes over the road, it goes over the wires. We've requested ever sources help to remove the tree, you know, due to the close proximity of the wires. They've been, you know, slow to react, we haven't heard back from them. We can't wait any longer, something bad's going to happen. In order to do the tree safely, we have to set the bucket up in the middle of the road to be able to get up and over the wires, you know, to reach where we have to reach. Be a lot easier if we could close the road down. Just, just for a small section of Sheep Hill Road. So we would close the road at Old Orchard and Sheep Hill, and at Palmer Hill and Sheep Hill, and then traffic would get routed down Old Orchard. And it would be for one working day. I had to put a date on it, so I requested for next Thursday, but that's actually not going to work. If you approve it today, you know, I could, I could get a date, but that's also, it can't be set in stone due to, you know, equipment breakdowns and weather, obviously, if it's like, you know, raining, we can't be working by the power lines, you know, so something like that.
This is more time sensitive.
Yeah, it's, I would like to get it done sooner rather than later, because it's been dead since last year, and now it's really, it's starting to fall apart, so we have to, we got to get moving on this.
Yeah, it's, issues of public safety, obviously, we usually override our, our need to do a second read.
Absolutely, absolutely. People are looking at me, because I just mentioned that I prefer second reads, but in this case, there's a public hazard. There's, it's, as you say, there's a time sensitivity to it.
If you wanted like a tentative date on it, we could do the 27th.
But to your point, I'm happy, I'm happy to vote on this today, because like, as we mentioned, this, this is time sensitive.
Well, you know, we could, we could put the, the date there, the 27th, in the motion, and then.
I'll just say, some, sometime between the 20th and the 27th.
And then I would just, I would just notify police dispatch, just to let them know, right?
And then let us know, so we could put out a notice, we could even put out like an e-blast and on a social media, just to let people know that this, it's, you know, more time sensitive and it's a public.
Okay, so I could contact Ken like that, you know, the, the beginning of that week and say, hey, it looks good for Thursday, and he could fire something away.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, great.
But to my colleague's point, let's make this as flexible as possible, so that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I got mine for the next one, too, for road closure for Guinea Road.
Yeah, let's, let's do a vote on this one first, and then we'll go to 22 Guinea Road.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for a temporary road closure of 203 Sheep Hill Road for a tree removal at some point during Thursday, July 20th through Thursday, July 27, 2023.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then going on to 22 Guinea Road.
22 Guinea Road, similar situation, there's several dead ash and a couple oak trees that need to be removed. I gave it to my private contractor over the summer, but due to, I don't know if you guys have ever been on Guinea Road, but it is tight and very windy. The contractor went to go do the work, they set up the bucket truck, once they put the outriggers down to stabilize the truck, no traffic could get by. So the police that were there told them, the Greenwich Police said, hey, you can't do this job, we have to close the road down. So that's.
So Joe, with being that this Guinea Road goes into Stanford, would we have to coordinate with Stanford?
I, I don't believe so, because we're not closing it in Stanford. What I was going to do, because Guinea Road is such a long stretch, I was going to close it at Juniper Hill, which is a, there's a cul-de-sac at the end, so traffic could turn around and go back the other way. And I was going to close it at Guinea and Stanwich, and then traffic would be routed down Todd Lane. And then I was going to put signage out in Stanford at Guinea in June, because that's where most of the traffic would be entering from, just to let them know, hey, road is closed at Juniper Hill, so, you know, if you need to get past that part, or you're using it as a cut-through, go to Todd Lane. And I was also going to put just a, just a guy there in a truck, just to, you know, tell anybody who's coming up, what's going on, and that they have to take a different route.
That makes sense. And because it's more than one tree, this, I assume, would be a day's work.
It's a day's work. I, I don't think that we're going to need more than a day. The bucket work, we could get everything brushed out in a day, and then if we have to go back to pick up wood, that shouldn't be an issue with having to close the road down. So anticipating a day on it.
Okay, and then, for the same reasons, the sooner the better, because of the.
Yeah, sooner the better. This, you know, this was scheduled to be done over the, over the, over the fall, and then it just, it wasn't able to get done, so now we're getting back to it.
Okay, plus we're in hurricane season, so I think sooner the better. Okay. Do we want to put a date on that, or just?
If we could use the same date is fine, I mean, it's not, we could do one one day, one another day, no big deal.
Okay, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for a temporary road closure of 22 Guinea Road for tree removal on Wednesday, July 19th, pending weather or any other complications. So somewhere around July 19th.
Okay, great.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Ken, thank you for the help again.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, next up is a request for reconsideration of the Parking Services Department decision not, to not include Davenport Avenue in the residential parking permit program. And is Lisa? Lisa, when you just announce your name for the record.
Yes, hi, Lisa Pasternak. It is Lisa, though, it has two S's.
I didn't make that mistake.
You did it great. Good morning, and thank you for having me. I have some photos, if you want, while I'm speaking, if you wanted to look for reference as to maybe, you know, give you a reference point as to what I'm talking about while I'm speaking. Is that all right?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't have a panoramic camera, so I'm going to, I just want to show you, this is like a weekend versus the weekday. So I'll just kind of, so I have more on my phone, but I just wanted to kind of give you a reference for our street. So I have been a resident on Davenport Avenue for 10 years, my husband has been there for 20 years, and we have some residents that have been there absolutely much longer than that, so. I just say that in context, that this is not a, you know, kind of an overnight thing. We completely understand DC Gray and the town of Greenwich's cautious approach to admitting streets into the residential parking permit program. But we would, but we think that we can show that our little street has a kind of somewhat unique circumstance that we would like you to please reconsider. We don't want to turn Davenport into a private road. We're not even talking about an issue where people are trying to park in front of their homes. This is a matter of not even being able to park on the street at all. The problem is, if a resident can't find parking on the street, there's very few options, since Davenport is surrounded by metered parking, commuter parking, metered parking on Steamboat and Museum Drive, and no parking at all on Oneida and Indian Harbor Drive, there's no parking. So there's very few options if a resident comes home and cannot find parking. We're a very small, dead-end street, we have approximately six legitimate parking spaces on the street, but maybe seven if you're trying to squeeze more people in. To give you reference, at 37, it's Davenport Cove, we have six condominiums there, we have seven multifamily homes, and we have five single residences on our street. And not all the residences have an option for off-street parking. We have approximately five people, maybe six people, that depend on street parking. We are one of the closest residential streets to the Metro North, as well as Greenwich Avenue, Bruce Museum, the Delamar Hotel, and Robert Sherman Baldwin Park. As residents, this is why I wanted to talk about how long we've been there, we have always dealt with event parking, that's not our issue. We feel like event parking is some, you know, that we deal with in our location, is something we can plan for, it's occasional. This is not what we're complaining about. The reason why we did apply for the permit parking program is because commuters have now discovered our street, and other vehicles, I don't know, they, they park, they leave the street, and there, and there's no turnover, they're staying many long hours. And this has been sort of, since people have gone back to work since the pandemic, so we've definitely seen a change in our street. And as you can imagine, with so very few parking spaces, like, we have a few, a couple residents that have jobs that require them to leave about 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, they're leaving their spots open. When they return at 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon, there's absolutely no parking, there's nothing that they can do. I think that's it, so we're just, thank you for hearing me, and I hope you reconsider the decision for our. Oh, and I, I wanted to mention, and we just think that exactly our situation on Davenport is really why the residential parking permit program was created. We think we, you know, fall into that. So thank you for reconsidering us.
Thank you, Lisa. A couple of questions. Not, I'm very familiar with, with the road.
Okay.
And the program. Just for clarification, do all of the residences, do they have off-street parking, some available to them, each, each unit?
No, not all. There's, I believe, 44 does not have off-street parking available. And then, like, 25 and 23 have one spot per residence available, and we have couples that have, you know, each have a car, so they only have one spot available to them. So there's, there is, there is definitely, I can say off the top of my head, one, at least one res, no, two residences, the one on the corner, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the number, 59, I believe, and 44 that do not have off-street parking.
So this would be their primary.
That would be, yes. And then the others have only one spot, and then.
Multiple cars.
You know, they have, each have separate careers, so they each have to have their own vehicle, so they only have one spot. So the spouse would depend on the street parking.
Okay, yes, because I know DC Gray and I had gone over this, because I, when I lived on Church Street West in Byram, we were having, we had, my neighbor didn't have any parking, and we had people leaving cars there for a long time, so. This is 20 years ago now, and we got, got the residential permit program, which resulted in tickets to even me. When I forgot to get, at the beginning, when I didn't get my ticket, I had to pay. But it does keep people on their toes. I, you know, I certainly, like you, I understand where Deputy Chief Gray's, Gray's coming from, because we can't do that with every road, because then.
Absolutely.
These are public, people park, where I live now park in front of my house all the time, and.
Yeah. And I just want to emphasize, we're not even talking about that parking in front of your house. We just have so few spots that when they're gone, there's very few options for residents outside of their own street. They can't even park on their own street. And then even along Steamboat, where there is some free parking, often that is taken up by commuters and Delamar employees. So it's a very, you know, it's a, it's a busy area, it's a very tight area over there.
Okay, I've spoken, I let my colleagues.
Do we know why it wasn't considered? Or why it was, so I, I just, I don't sort of have the history. So you went through a process where it was requested, and it was turned down, and now we're hearing it.
I can tell you my communication. So initially, when we applied in November, and I think it was, it was considered in January, the communication I received was that DC Gray believed there was adequate off-street parking for all residents, and that he did not see a problem with our parking. So a lot of residents reached out to him at that time. He did meet with all the residents, including two residents that I have here today. We met in person on the street at 8:00 in the morning, on a Wednesday morning. I don't know at that time, he couldn't find parking, so he had to park in front of somebody's driveway. And we pointed out some of the regular commuters that we see all the time, as well as, at that time, we saw people circling, but they saw a group of people on the street, so they didn't want to come down the street, because, you know, but they were kind of circling, looking for their, their normal spot.
Sure.
So I, so I can't speak to why then, because I thought it was open to reconsidering at that time. And then he wanted to contemplate it in April, which I understood, you know, to take the time. And then when we finally heard back, he just, the only explanation we have is that his original ruling did stand, even though we did have residents there that tried to tell him, look, like, I depend on the street parking, I do not have an off-street space. So I can't speak to further reason why, but this is what the residents were told.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's basically, again, you couldn't do this all over, because you would have no parking for anybody, but DC Gray's here if he wants to. Sure, thank, you're too quiet back there. Thank you.
Sure. If my recollection serves me correctly, this is, I operate the, off the idea that if we're going to close a road to make it exclusive use, that's a pretty high bar before we do that, right? Everyone's a taxpayer, it's a taxpayer's road. Certainly, there are some instances, right? And the residential program should be opened up, you know, judiciously. But in particularly this road, which is unlike many others, right, and I recognize the very unique aspects of it. My understanding is that if we're going to open up the road, I should say, open up the ordinance to create a no parking there, that I'm going to have to do a full traffic review. And so the, I'll call it the desktop review that we did, showed that this road is not, non-conforming, right? It was there before it ever was. Before, there was probably pavement, actually. So to do it now would be, for sure, there'd probably be no parking on the road. Although I know, as Pasternak said, the only legitimate spaces, they're not really technically probably legitimate at all. There's distances to the sidewalks, to the curb cutouts, distances across the road that must be met. But this, so this is a grandfathered road. So that's really what kind of informed it. Jim Michaels, Traffic Engineering, we talk about it, 265 miles of road in Greenwich, and, you know, so many of them are non-conforming to the current practice books for the engineers. So my concern is that if I open it up, and then I put in, even where will they put the no parking signs? All right, when you look at the driveway aprons and the breakouts that they do actually have there, that would go into the right-of-way, and then define the right spot, because it is literally so tight over there, that where would they put those? And so this is really what informed it. But if we can, what I would suggest, path forward, they've made their.
Appeal.
Appeal, is that we'll have a engineering review, say, what should the parking be on this road? And then they can answer the question from an engineering standard, based upon the Greenwich roadway design manual.
Yeah, okay, sure, sure, appreciate that.
I'm Michael Creamer, and I've been on Davenport Avenue for 35 years plus, Michael Creamer. I've owned 23 and 25 Davenport for 35 years. And there are a number of towns, streets in town that already have the permits that don't conform either. Havemeyer is a narrow street, and it's permitted there. I just, if you're going to do for one, do for all. Yeah, take it away for all. I mean, I just don't understand. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Lisa?
So in respect with what DC Gray is saying, he did bring up, our street is 29 feet wide. And he said, we, you know, we would have to have an additional feet to, to have legitimate parking on our street. The residents did ask him to please send us the wording of the ordinance, which we never did receive, we don't have that. And as Michael Creamer said, we have many streets that are, Havemeyer Place is actually 22 and a half feet wide, much more narrow than Davenport, and they have residential parking permits on both sides. So we're not talking about no parking, we've never, we don't have sidewalks, and as a matter of fact, we do have signs. And if you go look at our street, we have like a no parking beyond the sign, so there is room for signage there. I just implore you that, like, we've been going through this process since November, and we're now in July. And every day, these people are suffering, really. We have, I mean, we have two residents that have babies under a year old, and they, they come, like, if it's raining, it's just so difficult for them. So I'm just imploring you, like, to, to do a study. I mean, we've, we've, have never had an issue with the parking with the width of our street, right? And around town, there's so many streets that have residential parking, which are much, not, not slightly, much more narrow than Davenport Avenue, and we are not a through street.
Okay, we'll take a look at all the streets that are under, that have, in the program there, so I appreciate that.
Okay, did you want to hang on to the photos, or do you want me to take them back?
I don't need them.
No, okay.
Thank you so much. All right, now, thank you, and thanks for, for the back and forth. We'll, we'll talk more about this offline, but appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, going on to the next item, which is a request to establish a complete streets policy and protocol. And our friend Vin DiMarco, and I don't see Bobby D'Angelo, but.
Bob had to work today.
Vin's going solo.
So I'm here solo. Okay, this is a progression, I suppose, you know, seems like I'm here almost every month, or we're here almost every month with something else.
You and Peter.
Right? Yeah, him too. So interesting, following the parking discussion, you know, which is obviously a result of 50-plus years of expanding, everybody having a car, two cars, or, you know, you know. And so we're trying to do something that's going to help that, obviously. Okay. All right, so our concern, as, as I laid out in the proposal here, the request, is that a lot of things have been happening, and, and under your administration, and maybe just prior to that, we had a little bit of action, but. And, and I applaud that, we applaud that, you know, things are actually moving along a little bit. And we're applying for grants, which is, which is great, we got a couple of things. But we're concerned, we're not going to get these grants much longer unless we do the things that are required to, to get a grant. In particular, the, the complete streets thing, or something similar is what is part of the criteria in order to be able to secure a grant like this. And this particular grant I'm talking about is the SS4A, Safe Streets For All. And, and we're only really looking for a, a grant for funding to develop an action, an action plan, not even for implementation. But one of the things that's required here is, and it actually says it, under a list of general selection criteria. It says, you must, you must address this, or the application is ineligible. And, and one of them is, demonstrate how projects and strategies is supported by an existing complete streets policy or other roadway safety policies that eliminated barriers to prioritizing safety of all users. So I think we're disqualified altogether, because we don't have those, unless DPW, or unless there's something in writing somewhere that tells not only the, the people who are, who are providing the grant, but also residents, what the program is. I rode up from, from Byram this morning, and, you know, happy to see the shadows going down, okay. However, one of them had just been laid, or painted, and there was three cones around it, just before the entrance to the condos across from Byram Beach, okay? Okay? What a problem. I didn't make any, any friends amongst the, you know, 12 or so, 15 cars that were trying to get around that thing. I was on my bike. I got off the bike and moved one of the cones a little bit further over on the road. And I felt like somebody was going to shoot at me. But I'm not even sure that that shero was appropriate where it is, but whatever. I guess I'm bringing this up because there hasn't been any education about the sheroes. We think it should have been done prior to the sheroes going there, and we're hoping that you're going to be able to get something out there. Otherwise, we're going to have to write an article ourselves, you know, some sort of an opinion piece, that tells people what these things are. Had a conversation with, you know, a longtime resident, Pat Murphy, you know, if you know Pat Murphy, right?
I do.
And I said to him, I mentioned about the sheroes, he said, what are those? You know, so, people just don't know what they are, and they're going to be confused when they see these things. So, we're moving in the right direction, but really, the public doesn't know what we're doing. You know? So, our main concern is that, is that, you know, that we at least get started. We, you know, we've been talking about the complete streets policy since almost the beginning of the BTF, which was October of '21. Okay, I think it was in April of '22, when we said, okay, do we all feel, you know, we have consensus here that we need to move towards a complete streets policy? And we did, and we had consensus then. And then we continued to figure out, well, how can this be even a budgetary item? Can we hire a consultant to? And I think you had made the recommendation at one point, in a meeting we had with you prior to one of the, one of the BTF meetings. You said, why can't we hire a consultant to come in and just teach us about, you know, complete streets? Well, I mean, it's all over the place. We, you know, there's policies, you know, in many towns and cities in Connecticut, as well as the state policy. So, it's not, you know, secret what it is, but we are Greenwich, and we need to make it Greenwich, you know, we need to customize it so that it works. I mean, we have narrow roads, we have, you know, problems like this parking situation. So, maybe it isn't a complete streets policy, but we need some policy. I, of course, prefer an active transportation policy. I mean, I think that's broader, and it, and it, you know, covers all the bases, but, so what we're asking is for the Board of Selectmen to say, hey, DPW, Parks and Rec, you know, all departments under the First Selectment, under the executive branch, to, to work with the land use departments, appropriate land use departments, P&amp;Z, obviously, conservation is always involved in this stuff, too. Sit down and start to have this roundtable that we talked about, you know, months and months ago, and start to develop this thing. And if you did that, maybe that SS4A grant, maybe we will be eligible for that. We'd be able to show that we're actually moving towards a complete streets policy. Will it ever get through the RTM? Who knows? But we need to do something to go ahead and put sheroes on a road, on the roads, without, you know, anybody knowing what they are, seems dangerous to me. As well as dangerous for cyclists and motorists, you know, we just don't know, oh, what's that? You know? So, you know, just asking for, you know, several things. The other piece that I, that I put in this write-up here, which I think is extremely important, and it goes back to the idea of the metric, you know, the KPI for miles of sheroes, okay? Is that, you know, and I brought this point up before, that nowhere in any of the operations plans is there anything about bicycles, or, you know, what are we doing every year? Financial reports don't show anything either, you know, the end-of-the-year reports. So, so there's, there's no metrics there that we're working towards. I think we might, might have done some curb cuts, there's a handicap, whatever you call those things. Anyway, so, I think it's important that the language of the operations plans actually include that, complete streets, you know, working the goals this year, let's say, in DPW, both in engineering and in, and in highway, as well as the First Selectment's operations, you have an operations plan, right? So, I mean, there, there needs to be, the language needs to be there, so that people understand, this is what we're, what our goals are, what we're moving towards, and then, you know, and then I think we'll be more eligible for this kind of thing. So, that's it in a nutshell. You know, everything is pretty well explained in there. I applaud Michael and Jim for, you know, applying for that grant, but I'm afraid we're not going to get it unless we show that we're doing something to deserve it.
Thank you, Vin. Yeah, I will get an email out to everybody, P&amp;Z, Parks and Rec, DPW, today, to schedule a meeting to.
That'd be great.
We can get going on, on some type of, bless you, some type of formal policy where, where, you know, not only stating a goal where we want to be, and, you know, the metrics, how we achieve it, but also educating. So, maybe even just this year, this week, we'll get something out, maybe about the sheroes, and we could put something on social media.
Yeah.
And what about, because DPW has their own communications, so Renee.
That's true, too, right?
I think we have to connect with Renee and get, get the word out.
Yeah.
Who would be the department that sort of, you know, you'd be the executive sponsor, Fred, obviously, but who's the department that really needs to be the sponsor?
Sponsor it. Janice Point, somebody needs to own it, right? Okay. I mean, we would love to see Michael Kiselik be the guy.
The DPW.
Who runs this. Yeah, right. Who kind of coordinates this whole effort, because he gets it, he's a cyclist, you know, he knows what it's all about. And that would be great. I mean, we'd really go far, I think, if we were able to assign someone like, I know this is shorthanded, I know this problem is there, but maybe BET could cough up just a little bit more money and, you know, find a, you know, part-time consultant or something? I don't know.
We didn't have four building committees.
I think DPW is.
We could spare some DPW resources.
But I, but I, honestly, I think DPW is the department, since they would be the implementers of it. But I really feel that P&amp;Z needs to get on board. They're, they're not on board. I, in my view, I've asked them a number of times, sent them, you know, kind of opinions about different things, and it seems like that's not important to them. And I think it has to do with the way we develop, the way we provide off-street parking, you know, it's all connected. So, so I would hope, that's why, that's why we put that in there, that the land use departments really need to be in on this as well. So, that's it.
I will certainly get that out there. I'll copy you on email.
Appreciate that. Okay, so, as far as the actual request, I mean, if you're answering that request that way, I would just hope that it can, it's something that can stick, you know, that actually will, will happen.
Right.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly request it, and, you know, I personally agree with you. I think that we have to have something there as a roadmap going forward. And for, you know, fully understanding, you know, our challenges here, you know, it's not going to be exactly what we would like, but we have to do what we can with what we have. So, certainly, you know, DPW and zoning, and to, and Parks and Rec, because they're going through parks.
Absolutely. Parks and Rec, and they're really going to be the first department that has something in their operations plans, I believe, because it's part of their MO now, or part of their plan now, to be able to put trails, as you had mentioned a long time ago, put, you know, multi-use trails in through some of the parks.
That's what I was going to say, because this morning, every morning, I'm reminded of that, and this morning, a bunch of bikers, they come through my neighborhood, and they're, you know, they're having a great time early in the morning, there's a bunch of them. And I thought about asking, just to get an update, where we are with those off, you know, where the trails are getting.
Yeah.
Trails, right? Which, when I brought it up to Parks and Rec, they were actually very open to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you, I mean, if you can even identify one park and an area that we can do it, you know, I think that's very doable, there, because I do those trails all the time, all over the place, and you could see, you could visualize, envision, next to some of these trails, where there could be adjacent bike path, where there's not coming into contact with each other. And really availing these beautiful parks to bikes, like this, and, you know, bikers, not just hikers like me.
Well, if I had to choose a place right now, I mean, we've been talking a lot about Bruce Park, and Joe Sisliano was very much in favor of doing something through Bruce Park. However, to Lauren's point about the, earlier about the Central Middle School thing, you know, all these, you know, connections and trails and things, maybe that's really the area that, while Central Middle School is being developed, that we can identify where those routes.
Amaranth's planning.
And Michael Kiselik's on that committee.
Yeah, it's not just Central Middle School. I mean, people go to Cos Cob School, they go even, even take it further to the high school. I mean, these are, these are trails that could be used by kids, or even teachers, or parents, who want to, you know, be able to access these particular central Cos Cob schools, the Cos Cob area schools. That development of that trail network would be really, really helpful. So, and it would take the pressure off the complete streets proposal, or the policy, to have everything on the street.
If you can come back to us with a plan, and pick, pick a spot, and just, and walk it, and I'll be happy to walk it with you, and then we can present it to Parks and Recreation. And then if there's any funds that are needed, then we'll at least know what we're talking about. But if you, if yours, if that's the area you want to do, just let me know, we'll walk it, and we'll try and map out a little bit, where we can at least get something going there. Because I think that could be the start of a lot of, a lot of good things, where these trails, we're so lucky in Greenwich, we have, you know, I think we're the most in southwest Connecticut as far as trails. So, why not?
Right.
I think we were first or second, yeah. So, I think, you know, we're the second biggest landmass.
That's interesting, because we're not even listed.
Yeah.
When you go on a state site that says trails.
Do you remember we had, do you remember we had that, it was on Zoom, somebody was presenting something, I think it was Phil Dotson, said, this is not correct, these numbers. We actually have a lot more. And we started adding up. We did, and we weren't, we had not gotten credit from the state of all these trails. We just added 90 acres last, two years ago. And we're working on some others now, hopefully. So, well, we are working on them, hopefully they'll come online. But, yeah, I think there's so much potential there. So, in addition to all this, pick a spot that you want it to be that, that first one, and then we'll, we'll work to make it happen.
Okay, I'll sit down with Bob at a, you know, an espresso tomorrow, maybe, and we'll, we'll hammer it out.
We know.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vin. Peter? Peter Alexander?
As it relates to this topic?
This topic?
Peter Alexander, I want to, Vinny can probably tell I'm not riding my bike as much as I used to. I, when you were in Hartford, was it then that municipalities were able to get the speed limits on their own, down to five miles an hour for particular roads and portions of roads? I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that, but it was, it came through as a protocol.
Three years ago, four years ago, I think it was Mallard Drive, we had asked about that, and there was a protocol, there was a procedure you had to do with the state, and you had to document what the average speeds were as far as in that particular area, because there was a, there was a request at Mallard, on Mallard Drive. And the studies didn't show what, in fact, it would have increased, if you went by the average speeds, the speed limit would have went up, which was not what they wanted, they wanted it lowered. So, that was a protocol that the state.
That was like an odd study.
Yeah, the state, you have to get a certified study showing what the average speed is there, and then that, that was, that was like four years ago, three and a half years ago. We could, we could, I could reach out to them.
It'd be easy to do with a camera, and we, I mean, I'm, my experience in recreation-oriented communities, I'm a bike fan, the only reason I came close to getting to the Olympics is because of our roads, riding them. So, thank you, I just wanted to have.
We're going up Cliftdale Avenue. All right, thanks, Peter. All righty, going on with two more items. A request for consideration of the code of conduct requirement for members of town boards, commissions, and committees. Select person Janet Stone-McWhiggan.
Thank you. So, yes, as I, as I mentioned in my update, we are now in the new fiscal year. I thought that this would be an appropriate time to bring up this topic. My colleague Lauren Raven has, on numerous occasions, gently but firmly cautioned our volunteer committee, commission, and board members to please think before you post. We are, our human resources department is about to release its updated employee manual, and in it is a code of conduct for social media. I just thought this is, this is the appropriate time to ask all of our town volunteers to sign that same code of conduct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and we've discussed this, you know, as we interview people for boards, commissions, and committees, we've started to ask the interviewees if they would be willing to sign it, and no one has said no. So, I think this is, in some ways, I don't like these terms, no-brainer, but I can't think of something else to say. And as long as our HR department, you know, Fred, they report to you, can help facilitate, and Barbara, there's no legal issue, help facilitate, you know, getting that done, it would be hundreds of people.
Yeah, and it's, I spoke with Mary and Barbara about this. I think it's something we all feel very strongly about, but it's not as easy, like everything else, it's not as easy as we, you know, we would like it to be. There's different types of volunteers, some are elected, so I don't know how that would, you know, somebody's on the BET or the BOE, they've been elected by the, by the people of Greenwich. I don't know if we can compel them to sign something like that. Certainly, you know, I spoke with Mary Pepe and HR. This policy came about within the last four years, I believe, because we had an incident where somebody posted something that he shouldn't have, and we've since then seen it a couple of times. So, the, we wanted to get some policy in place for the town employees, but we just think that, you know, we want to stay ahead of these things and try and prevent some things from happening, and if something, somebody violates it, then they violated it. But they, we want them, they knowingly knew, went into this knowing what the policy was. So, I think if we could just, I think we all know where we want to go here, but there's some questions about what we can do and what we can't do.
Yeah, I can certainly talk to Mary about it, we can look into it. I think, Fred, you're raising a good point. You know, the question is, could elected officials be compelled to do it? I'm not sure, I, I don't know the answer to the question, but, you know, these are good thoughts, and I agree, it's something that's definitely worth looking into, and we can do that.
And I think, yeah, to clarify, I think we only want the ones that we appoint as the Board of Selectmen and the RTM appoints, not necessarily, I mean, we have.
So, you're talking about volunteers?
Well, for the, for the boards, commissions, and committees. I mean, we as elected officials, we're paid, we had to, we have to do it, but I understand not all elected officials are compensated. So, I think.
Correct.
I wouldn't put them in the same category. But if we have regular citizens that we, as the Board of Selectmen, either, you know, Fred, you appoint people on the.
Shellfish.
Shellfish. So, I think the people who are going to be on the Shellfish Commission should be in the pool that we're looking to implement this for, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission, who we nominate and the RTM appoints. So, it's, it's those boards, commissions, and committees.
And the other thing, my other question is, we all kind of agree on, when we see something that's offensive, but what's offensive to you may not be that offensive to me, and how do we craft a policy where someone will say, what's wrong with what I said? You know, or I just reposted something. You know, you don't want to get to a point where somebody may repost, you know, All in the Family, an Archie bunker, which is funny stuff, but at today's standards, it's not funny, even though we all laughed, you know, when we were kids.
I think our policy is clear. Our policy is clear that we have, that we, what is considered inappropriate.
Well, I did think, things change, though. Again, what's appropriate now, inappropriate, what's appropriate now may not be appropriate in 10 years.
But that would apply to us, too.
Well, I was going to say, you could, you could, that's already true of our employees. I mean, and I think the point is to make people think, and when someone signs something, then there's, you can't avoid it. You have, you have to think about what you're doing, and we're spilling it out very clearly. I just also want to just say, the more we expand the universe of people who sign this code of conduct, the better. But for the purpose of this discussion, it's just, we're just talking about volunteers who would come under the Board of Selectmen that we appoint.
All right, so we're not dealing with elected officials at all?
That was not, that was not the intent of this request, however, that said, I think it would behoove them.
We do it.
To do it as well, and the legal women voters would point out that an elected official is not a volunteer. You are. an elected official is not a volunteer, you are accountable to the public. So this is just one more, you know, just one more way of showing your accountability.
We could ask CCM if other communities do this, there may be a blueprint for it.
Right, I was just thinking that, maybe we can, we don't have to reinvent the wheel because they're-
Absolutely not.
Yeah, we can look into what other municipalities may have done, and, you know, that might be something that the board is satisfied with, or maybe we want to tweak it, but that would definitely be the place to start.
But I completely concur with my colleague Lauren Raven, that, that it is clear, I mean, what we, what we currently sign is clear.
Yeah, I just, again, I worry going forward, best intentions, sometimes, you know, what was funny 30 years ago, today, people look at it like it's, and say it's offensive. So we'd have to have something in there where you're, you can revisit it, because things, times change, and, and who knows what today we laugh at, you know, and I'm not a fan of that, but I'm just, it's just reality.
Yeah.
It's reality.
Sure.
So I do, we have to be careful.
We'll take into consideration.
Barbara, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we have one more discussion, which I alluded to in my updates, that we would like to change the date of the Board of Selectmen meeting on the 27th to a nighttime meeting, the first time since March of 2020. So I'll let Lauren-
Lauren Raven, I motion that we change the time of our July 27th meeting from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Janet Stone-McWhiggan, I second.
Wallo's in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggan, yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see how that works out, but it was, we found it was pretty good, and for the few times we did it in 2020, so maybe we'll see if we can get back to doing that in the future. So, all right, any other comments that we see? Peter?
Peter Alexander, lifelong resident, and I wanted to, I'm glad you're here, I'm going to make a presentation on the 19th to the Harbor Commission, and I have material that I will be using as the base. Is it okay to share it with you three, or do I have to? What are the protocols for informing you before the meeting?
You could, you could share material, we just can't discuss it without publicly noticing it as a meeting, so I mean, if you give it to us, that's, it's like sending an email to us, we could read it, but we can't discuss it unless we've, we've noticed it for a meeting, so.
Okay. I, I wanted to double check, I, you know, I've worked with the Corps on and off since '76, and I'm registered with FEMA and the EPA, so I just wanted to make sure. I've made mistakes in the past about spilling the beans too early, so trying to avoid it, especially here, because we, the Harbor Commission seems very amenable to a mirror study, whoever gets the soil testing, it's a really good idea for either an independent or the locales, this goes back to Resource Conservation Recovery Act, God bless Governor Waker, he got it through, but the towns, especially with Brownfield potential sites, can be informed only, and then the procedures going forward. I just want to be super careful, because I think we're actually going to get something done soon, so, thank you for all your efforts. I know you're paid, but you're not really paid, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
So I was going to say, thank you, Peter, as the liaison to the Harbor Management Commission, just, just to be clear, as you say, not to get ahead, I think the Harbor Management Commission is amenable to hearing your presentation. I wouldn't presume, you know, where the commission is in terms of any kind of vote on, on that.
You said the 19th?
Well, yeah, yes, the 19th, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any appointments?
I do have two, but I didn't preview them to you guys first, so I think we could do it after our executive session.
Okay.
Very good.
And I, I just wanted to clarify, because people have been asking me, there has been a liaison appointed for the neighborhood to the Central Middle School Building Committee, that was not an appointment that was made by this board, it was made by the First Selectmen, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, we had discussed that, and I kind of forgotten about, because we had originally wanted to do that at the beginning, and then what had happened was, we wanted to do one neighborhood liaison, not to be a voting member, but just to go there and listen and go back and disseminate information, and then central, because it dissects two neighborhoods, one neighborhood thought they were not going to be represented, their interests would be represented, so we, we just decided at that point, wanted to move forward, we did not to have anybody, and they were okay with it. But now that's, it's come up again, so we'd like to put two on there, so we'll, we'll discuss it, I guess, in, in the executive session about having two people on, just so both people, both sides of the school can at least go back and tell their neighbors what's going on, and bring their concerns to it, but they, they won't be voting members.
Well, thank, thank you for that clarification, I just, yeah, I just wanted-
Yeah, I saw that, I was confused when I saw that.
Provide some color to that, because it makes sense to me that we have liaisons from our advisory committees, you know, they, they do work on our behalf, we, we want, you know, our common goals to be discussed earlier rather than later, and in particular, when it comes to energy management, when it comes to ADA concerns, that, that makes sense to me. With, with neighborhoods, if, especially if there isn't an association that encompasses all of the neighbors, it's not as clear that there is an accountability, and in, in the case of Central Middle School, many neighbors have very different interests. So to appoint just one elevates that particular agenda, but not necessarily everybody's agenda, so I just, I just wanted to make some clarification on that.
Yeah, that's, and that's the exact reason why we wanted to have two there, and that was, you know, the idea from the beginning was just to, to not slow meetings down, but to just have people there from the beginning, so they're bringing their neighbors up to speed on what's going on, so they're not reacting at the end saying, what happened? So I think it's, it's something-
And Rachel's been doing a very good job of that so far.
Right, and it's worth, it's worth emphasizing here, Lauren and I are together on four different building committees, and all of these, all of these meetings are public, so if anybody has any concern, one doesn't have to be a liaison to bring any concern before the, the building committees.
True that.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other businesses, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWhiggan, I second.
Wallo's in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggan, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Jenny, thank you, Ken, thank you, Don, behind the wall, and thank you, Barbara, for being here.